Welcome everyone to the regular, although new, hybrid meeting at the San Rafael City Council. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I haven't been able to say that for two years, calling the meeting to order. And I will request a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill is absent. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scalotti.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present, so four of us are here. So, take a deep breath, welcome to our first in-person hybrid council meeting since the pandemic began two years ago. So, take a moment to look around the chambers for those that are here. Share in our gratitude that we finally arrived at this moment. It is fantastic to be in the same room and conducting city business together. And for those that are here, we have cupcakes. Heard it for two years, they are here. City Manager Schutz will provide a more in-depth thank you to the staff who helped us to beautifully navigate the past 25 months. But I know I speak for the entire council when I say we're very grateful for how our staff showed up for our community and recognize their ongoing commitment to San Rafael. As we mark this special moment, we also pause and we remember that 987,000 Americans who have passed away from COVID. We pause and acknowledge those who have lost a family member or a friend to COVID. And we pause and recognize that there are those who continue to struggle with both the physical and mental impacts of the pandemic. I won't say that we're in a new normal, as things won't ever be normal or as they were before March 2020. But looking ahead, San Rafael is committed to building back better and bringing optimism, collaboration, and compassion, as together we address the many challenges that we have here in our city. I invite you all to be part of that partnership, but those in the room and those who are still watching virtually. Together, we are truly stronger. Thank you for caring about our city. I will close with a land acknowledgement. Present-day San Rafael is located in the traditional lands of the Coast Miwok people. And we recognize this history as well as those who still reside here. With that, I will turn it to Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. And anyone who is unable to make it to the council chambers can still provide public comments by telephone at 669-900-9128 and using the meeting ID 899-2635-9885. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. If commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand button and let us know when you would like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanofel.org. And for those of you who are attending in person and wish to provide public comment, you can approach the podium once Mayor Kate opens the public comment period and displayed on the podium and the projector as a two-minute timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. For public comments not related to tonight's agenda, you can fill out a public comment card that's found in the lobby or they're located right here and then submit them to me. And we're happy to have you back in chambers once again.
Thank you. First item, are there any comments from the public on topics not on tonight's agenda? We'll give you a moment, I'm sorry, everybody. Yeah, so why don't you go ahead and then we can put the card after, nice to see you. Wait, wait, is she on? I could hear you, but I don't think everyone at home can. Okay, there you go.
I just wanted to say welcome back, back where you belong, so to speak. And I just wanted to introduce myself to council members whom I have not had the pleasure of meeting, Vice Mayor Kurtz and Councilmember Lauren Scalotti, am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
My name is Vicky Severs, I'm affiliated with an organization, a nationwide organization called the EMF Safety Network. Its mission is to educate the public and, and, and public officials about the harms, the environmental harms and human harms from wireless radiation, from electromagnetic radiation, hence the name EMF Safety Network. Last year, I was, had the pleasure of being a member of the working, the residents' working group of the County Digital Marin Project at the invitation of Rebecca Woodbury. And before that, in 2018, thanks to Jim opening the doorway to planners here, I was the co-leader of a small team of residents who worked with Paul Jensen and, and then Senior Planner Ally Judice and another planner to help develop the city's small cell antenna telecommunications policy that was passed in December of 2018. And through 2019, two of us continued to meet with, with, with the same, with the same staff to examine potential amendments, revisions, revisions and amendments to strengthen, further strengthen that policy, that ordinance resolution 14621. And then along came the holidays and the retirement of a planner, and then the plague hit. And we know what kind of upheaval that was here. So, I spoke with Ally last summer and she agreed to revisit it beginning early this year. So, I've been tugging on her sleeve and that's where we stand right now, thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that are in the chambers?
I see no hands raised in Zoom, but I'll give everyone a few seconds and just remind everyone that if you're calling in, you can press star nine. And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I'll close the public comment and turn it over to our city manager. We can all see outside of a little box.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I have a little bit longer than usual city manager report tonight, so hopefully you'll indulge me. I wanted to make a few comments along the same lines of your opening comments as well of what a big deal it is to be back in the chambers. And I was just sitting here thinking that I've had meetings in this room for over 15 years. So, why does it feel so different now after this break? But it really does, so I just wanted to say a huge thank you to the San Rafael City Council for all of your leadership through these last couple of years, city staff and the community for their resiliency. That was kind of the, the word that we are using all the time in our newsletter and other things. One of the most important things I can say that I'm really proud of is that public safety never closed, our city offices never closed, really. We are always providing services, even in 2020, when there is very little known about the pandemic and we are a long way from vaccines, our public safety officers were responding to every single 911 call and delivering the high-quality services in the safest way possible. And all the city departments kept going as well. There's a phrase that's used in emergency management that's called continuity of government. And it's used to describe how governments continue their essential operations even during disasters, catastrophic events or emergencies. And to me, it has a really deep meaning when I think about these last couple of years and the continuity of government of just, we've been able to continue doing our regular work at the same time that we were responding to a major emergency, a pandemic. And, and both of those things happening at the same time. So, it's an important milestone to get back to these meetings in persons. We're not over, obviously yet, as you alluded to, Mayor Kate, with the pandemic. But we are seeing more commercial businesses and people going back to offices and restaurants opening. We still have a number of community members that are still vulnerable. And we have people that are on emergency rental assistance lists and things like that. So, not saying we're done in any way, I'm just saying that it feels like a milestone to be able to get back into the chambers and continue the continuity of government in this different way that feels even more inclusive to me. I asked Quinn Gardner, who was recently promoted, but was our emergency management coordinator for much of the past two years and kind of the right arm of Assistant City Manager Christina Lillovich and me as we were going through the pandemic, kind of, who would you thank, Quinn? You know, if you had, if you had a few minutes to thank people, and it's, it's really an impossible thing to do with, with everything that's going on. But I wanted to share with you what, what Quinn shared. And I'm going to go through it really quickly, but just kind of a overall breadth and depth of, of the impact. She started with the community volunteers that worked at food distribution, testing centers, vaccination and booster clinic, doing neighbor-to-neighbor check-ins. The business community, finding, finding creative ways to stay open, outdoor dining, supporting pandemic response, the food delivery. Everyone that got vaccinated and boosted to protect our community and make Marin one of the highest vaxxed and boosted counties. Our county public health officers and staff. Everyone that worked logistics, testing supplies, cleaning supplies, porta-potties, handwashing stations. All the creative service deliveries from city staff, from curbside pickups, online permits, virtual community centers. One of my favorites, because it's a real small thing, but it just stands out, is donating face masks and face coverings using the library book drops, just like anything that could be done to kind of continue the services and assist in the pandemic. The city, all through that time, is operating an emergency operations center or EOC with all, with city staff. And that was in full, fully engaged through 2020 and most of 2021. And continues to this day, but we're not kind of going into a physical space or meeting virtually as much anymore. But all of the emergency operations staff and people that participated as disaster service workers, all city employees have a regular job title that they were hired for. And then they're also a disaster service worker and can respond in a crisis to anything that's, that's going on. We had all of our childcare staff, emergency childcare centers, rental assistant staff and volunteers, public safety employees that I already mentioned, public work staff functioning on all sorts of new ways, public information teams, finance with a recovery plan. Community essential workers like our teachers, grocery store workers, healthcare providers, support and service providers for people experiencing homelessness. Resident support of first responders and essential workers. Quinn reminded me of the howling and clapping nights that we used to go on in the beginning, which seems like it was 10 years ago now. Federal and state support such as through ARPA or the American Rescue Plan. And again, she mentioned our, our city council and city leadership. And then I'll add Quinn to her list for being such an amazing resource and our right arm as we are going through the emergency operations center. So, just again, I could probably talk for a couple hours, but really just wanted to hit the basics of just the gratitude and appreciation that we all have for everyone that made these extremely difficult years doable because of the city team and our governmental, our non-governmental partners and all of our community members as well. So, just kind of filled with gratitude tonight for everything that we've been through. Know that there's still a lot left to do and more to come, but just appreciative of what, what we've been through and working together as a community. I wanted to finish my opening comments with, if you're still feeling the spirit of community and would like to look for volunteer opportunities, there's a couple of great things coming up this week that are Earth Day related. There are volunteer opportunities that Downtown Clean and Green and Shop Local for Earth Day is this Friday, 10 to noon. And people who want to volunteer to help clean in the downtown for a couple hours can check in at the City Plaza at 1,004th Street or West End Public Parking Lot at 1554th Street. And then we're encouraging people to spend a little time volunteering and then shopping downtown to support our local businesses that are still very much in need of our support. And then the next day, the Saturday, from 10 to noon, the city's volunteer program is hosting neighborhood beautification projects. And San Rafael's Office of Emergency Services, or OES, is hosting a fire prevention weed pull effort off of San Pedro Road. So, there's lots of different ways to participate along Earth Day. There are lots of sites this year for, for that Saturday morning events. From Mahone Creek and Path, Shoreline Path, Marydale Road, Pickleweed Park. And then 101 Surf Sports is again, offering a free kayak or stand-up paddleboard rental for those who want to clean up the waterway itself. And then the broom pole I mentioned is the Point San Pedro Road Coalition. And they have a nine to 11 and 11 to one slot. All of this information, because people might be interested in one or the other, is at our main homepage, thecityofsanofel.org, sorry, cityofsanofel.org. And both under the news and events section, there's, there's information on all of those locations. And then lastly, really quickly, Mayor Kate asked me to mention that PG&E is inviting all customers to a virtual safety town hall on Wednesday to discuss information and resources on PG&E's wildfire prevention efforts. We have a couple items coming forward likely your next city council meeting related to our community wildfire plan. But this is a PG&E hosted event on Wednesday, April 20th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And you access it, it's a virtual event, you access it through pgne.com/fire-safety-webinars, all one word. And they will be talking about undergrounding more power lines, expanding safety settings program and planned improvements, progress on system upgrades to prevent wildfires and additional customer resources to prepare for wildfire season. And again, we'll have more information from the city perspective on this as well at the next meeting. So, that concludes my opening remarks and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you, Jim. We will take public comment on the city manager's report. So, I guess any members of the public, we're, we're still finding our way here. If you'd like to make a comment on the city manager's report, you can come down to the microphone. And if I don't see anyone, we will see if there's anyone virtually who'd like to comment.
Thank you, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in or if from outside of San Rafael. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment. I see no hands raised, I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I'll close the public comment on that. Thank you, city manager, for your leadership as well. In the list of thanking, you did not thank yourself, so I will do that on behalf of the council and the community for really bringing us all together in some uncharted time with no playbook. And, and here we are, so thank you so much. Okay, council member reports, and I will start with the Vice Mayor.
Okay, I turned it on. It does feel like the first day of school, so it really does. And we'll share a little bit, Mayor Kate asked me, I don't know, was it today? Today, are you ready? And, and I was like, I said iPad this and that. I'm like, I thought you were asking emotionally ready. So, I'm like, I'm not ready technically, ready emotionally. Okay, so, to business, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, MWPA, we have one project that is going to be highlighted on this Thursday's meeting is a project around evacuation routes. And this is sort of break, new ground that the MWPA is breaking about identifying objectively how best to identify evacuation routes in areas of risk. And this will help us, it's sort of like a credit score. So, everyone has their individual credit score, every street in San, in Marin County is going to have a score. And it's going to help both in terms of prioritizing the work that needs to be done, but also help the firefighters for identifying the best evacuation routes. So, more to come on that, it is, it is a big investment and it is new and we're all really excited by it. And we're working closely with the fire chiefs and the departments on this. Also attended the planning commission interviews, super impressed with all the people who showed up for that. And, and I think we are very, very lucky. I also invited myself to the fire commission meeting and attended that, which was really nice to, again, great commitment of the team there. And then I was able to join Chief White on visits to fire stations 56, 57, and 58 with breakfast goodies that were provided by the San Rafael Fire Foundation. So, it was really nice.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I am delighted to be back. So, good to see everyone and be back, back, back together. Meetings I attended, and the Central Marin Sanitation Agency meeting has been, was held last week. And we had a, a closed session on our labor negotiations that are coming up. Things are proceeding well on all fronts there. And we also had the Library Foundation Dinner honoring the retirement of Susan Andretti Wax. It was a lovely event, we thank the foundation for hosting that and giving us an opportunity to give thanks to our outgoing library director and to articulate all of our commitments to the various library functions going on in the city. Also, attended the planning commission interviews and really want to second the Vice Mayor's observation of just the immense talent of all of our applicants. And we only had one position open, but we hope that all of the applicants will find a place somewhere in the, in the busy city structure to assist us. And finally, Councilmember Hill and I continue our work with the MCC MC Water Committee. We are writing a report for the, that will be going to the entire MCC MC for their review in the next several months. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mica.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Yeah, it is so nice to be here, not just because it's the first time that we actually are here, that I am here actually as a council member since I was elected, but also being able to see everybody is extremely nice, just to actually see the real people. So, it's, it's really nice to be here. In terms of meetings, I attended the Economic Development Subcommittee with Mayor Kate. It is really nice to connect with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, with the BID as well, talking about the dinner, dining under the lights for the planning and also parklets. And right after that meeting, I attended the East San Rafael Business as well. And I really appreciate our team. Homeless Program Director Mark Sabine was there, giving an update about the people that they are housing in San Rafael and how that affects businesses. And also Director Gearing and Assistant City Manager Christine Lapovic was there as well, talking about parking in the canal. So, echo with my, all the council members are saying about the planning commission interviews, it's really amazing how lucky we are in San Rafael to have such an amazing, you know, group of people, so committed. And my last one will be my little, you know, encouragement that this Saturday, we have the cleaning day in the canal, we are going to do it in Pickleweed, so come join us. And then we'll have community conversations, so I really look forward to that, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, did you want to add on something to your community? Yeah.
Likewise, on our community conversations, I think we're all scheduled within the next couple of days. Mine will be on Sunday from three to five at Tara Linda Rec Center. And I believe Councilmember Hill will be also, and his family will be joining us. And that's from three to five.
And I will be next Wednesday, the 27th, in Peacock Gap Park, I'm talking about our master plan for parks.
Thank you, and all of that is on the city website. To see, to wrap it up, the meetings that I attended, SMART, Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit, our subject matter was actually in the IJ. And I am thrilled that the general manager, Eddie Cummins, is really looking at how they can work on the timing of the gates and timing of the trains, so people won't have to hopefully sit there as long as possible. The, the data, like the outline, the longest you could get stuck there if everything went south, before he fixed it, was almost three minutes. And I'm telling you, I was stuck there a couple of times and that's when people would email, and I get it. So, the outlier time, he's trying to bring that down to just over a minute. So, stay tuned and we're just really grateful for his efforts to recognize the impact on our community as well as people traversing. So, it was a great SMART meeting from that standpoint. We, Councilmember Hill and I, along with the city manager and Director Judice from Community Development, had the schools, city, county meeting. And we actually were in person, we had breakfast. And it's just checking in once a quarter about issues that affect both all those entities and how they intersect, we had a long conversation regarding housing. So, that was great to see them in person, we ate at the Black Bear Diner. Want a big cup of coffee, that's the place to go. And then finally, speaking of interviews, as you may know, on our, part of our economic strategic, strategy is to have an economic strategic plan. And we had interviews this morning with four incredible, incredible agencies. So, stay tuned on that, there's been no decision made, but moving forward in terms of recovery and long-term planning. So, with that, Madam City Clerk, I guess I'll entertain, any comments from the public in the chamber on the city council reports? Okay, not seen any, I will see if there are any online or virtual.
To comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. And I see no hands raised at the moment, but I'll give everyone a few seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I will close the public comment and bring it to the consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent agenda? Look, I can actually see you shaking your heads, this is so novel. Nothing wants to be pulled, so I'll open it for public comment on the consent calendar. There are three items on it. Oh, any members of the public, I was so used to just going, you, any members of the public would like to comment that are here in person? Okay, not seen any, Madam City Clerk.
I see no hands raised now, but if you wanted to provide public comment, you can do that by using the raise hand feature on Zoom. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I will close the public comment and bring it back for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Hi.
Councilmember Yaren Scalotti.
Hi.
Mayor Kate.
Hi, that motion carries 4-0. On our public hearing, our first item is streamlined review for certain residential projects. And I, oh, Jacob's here, I was looking at Director Judice, but you were sitting there. So, I will turn it over to Jacob.
Good evening, bear with me for a moment.
Of course.
We're back in live chambers and I need, I might need some help bringing up the, the presentation, but I...
That's good, we'll just eat a cupcake while we're waiting for this, it's no problem. There we go.
All right.
All right.
So, this item, I, I believe has been a little while in the making. And this is streamlined review for certain residential projects. It was formerly known as a Design Review Advisory Committee or by its acronym, DRAC. Just a little review of, of what this item consists of. Back around in, in the summer of 2018, August 20th, the city council received a report on challenges and opportunities around housing approval and the development process. And that was followed by a report on September 3rd of 2019 with 11 key challenges and 13 recommendations. And at the time, the city council directed the staff to go out and conduct workshops. Community workshops were done on November 3rd and the 19th of 2019. And then a follow-up report was provided to the city council and capturing the input from the community around these challenges and recommendations. That was on January 21st of 2020. And at the time, the city council provided some direction to make some amendments in the municipal code. Now, those possible amendments were shared with the planning commission on August 20th, 2020. And then the item returned to the city council on September 8th and then with a follow-up report on September 21st. and then with a follow-up report on September 21st. And at that meeting on September 21st, the city council provided some direction to staff to go ahead with changes to the inclusionary housing requirement, which has been completed at this point, to make an update to the density bonus program, which has also been completed. And then asked staff to explore a possible pilot program for streamlining the development review. At that time and in that report, it was referred to as a Design Review Board Subcommittee. So that last item is the subject of this item. That's before the city council this evening. Now, for the pilot program, staff did go to the Design Review Board. And on November 4th of 2020, discussed, the, the, the Design Review Board discussed and commented on this concept of streamlining the review. And their comments were incorporated into a possible, a concept pilot program that was shared with them on February 17th of 2021. And again, the Design Review Board discussed and commented on that. And at this time, again, as I noted earlier, it was referred to as a Design Review Advisory Committee. That has since been changed to its present name this evening, which is just simply streamlining design review. The discussion from the Design Review Board and comments were integrated into the final proposed pilot program that was then shared with the planning commission earlier this year on January 25th, 2022. The planning commission reviewed that proposal and has recommended that city council consider adopting a one-year pilot program. Now, on the left of the screen here, I just want to bring your attention here briefly to this. I've provided a very summary form of the Design Review Board's residential purview. Now, the purview of the board is, is greater than this, but these four points really summarize the purview around residential projects. And at the, above the line, I've bolded and, and kind of highlighted in blue two items, which is the, under the purview, applications that include a structure with three or more dwelling units do go to the Design Review Board, that is subject. In addition, projects, applications that come in that include the addition of more than 40% of the square foot of the existing structure, also with that, if the structure has three or more dwelling units, also go to the Design Review Board. So it's important, I, I wanted to highlight that because that's sort of the premise of the structure around the pilot program that we've designed for the council's consideration. Now, moving on, whoop, a little too fast. So as proposed in the one-year pilot program, if we'll start up in the upper left corner here with the, there's, as proposed, the, for a subset of the Design Review Board's purview, which is based on these two bullets that I've mentioned. The, there would be representatives delegated from the Design Review Board that would attend planning commission meeting. And we've proposed that this be the Design Review Board Chair, the landscape architect. However, if one or both were not able to attend the meetings, there is a process within the ordinance, within the resolution that's followed essentially today for other items, where they would be able to notify the director that they would not be able to attend. The director would then go by tenure through the Design Review Board members to see who could attend in their stead. So this would be in place for the one year of the pilot program. Now, for these two types of applications, if you will, from the left-hand side over, the structures with three or more dwellings, if we receive an application that's up to 10 units, so this is a new project of between three and 10 units, that application would be eligible for the streamlined review. What that means is that it would proceed, once it's complete, deemed complete, it would proceed directly to the planning commission's scheduled meeting. That would be announced to the public as a planning commission meeting with the Design Review Board representatives attending the meeting. And at the meeting, the Design Review Board representatives would participate, providing their comments, feedback to the planning commission at that meeting where the planning commission could make its recommendation and approval of the project that night. Other projects that would fall below this line on the screen, they would follow the in-place process for the Design Review Board. They would go to the full board before going to the planning commission. So what this streamlined review approach does essentially for this very limited number of residential projects is it cuts out one public meeting. However, it integrates that meeting with the planning commission. So the public is noticed, as it has noticed now. And we are very focused on maintaining transparency in the process and assuring that the public does have an opportunity to comment on the projects. In this case, it would be commenting at the planning commission rather than at the Design Review Board meeting. Following the one-year pilot program, there would be an evaluation. That evaluation, it would be, the program would be evaluated by the planning commission, the Design Review Board, and the city council would be provided with a report that includes their comments and input and recommendations to either continue the program, for instance, to continue it with adjustments or to discontinue the program, if, if that was the case. The program would be evaluated on its effectiveness to reduce the processing time around housing applications while maintaining the design quality. The report does include, I believe on page five, a number of different metrics that we had received in a letter from the public. And we have added those in as some metrics that we would want to look at in terms of really measuring what that, the effectiveness was for the program. Now, with the staff report that you've been provided in the packet, there are six attachments. Just to highlight these briefly, there's the ordinance that is necessary to make a change to the purview of the design review, recognizing that this, the, the subset of representatives could sit in with the planning commission. There's a resolution that maps out what this one-year pilot program would entail, including how the Design Review Board representatives would participate with the planning commissioners. There is a flow chart showing the Design Review Board process, which I have very much simplified in this presentation. And then there's the planning commission resolution supporting the one-year pilot program. The full report that was delivered to the planning commission is provided as a link. And there is an attachment six, which is one letter that we received from Responsible Growth Marin in advance of producing the report. And then we have, since the council has received one additional public comment letter. Just before concluding, I'd like to offer a proposed amendment. After producing the report, we realized that there is a simpler way of, of providing one line of direction in the resolution. This is on page two. It's under the purpose and authority, which is section A. There are two bullet points that describe the types of projects that would be eligible. Staff is recommending that the first bullet be revised. Currently, it reads as residential structures of 10 units or less. And then in parentheses says does not apply to project subject to minor environmental design review. It's much easier to just say residential structures of three to 10 units. Because that, that is within, as I mentioned earlier, that the purview of the Design Review Board is for three or units or more structures. So with that recommended revision, the recommendation is here on the screen, which is to pass to print and ordinance as amended of the city of San Rafael, amending the section 14.25070 of Title 14 of the municipal code, establishing the streamlined review for certain residential projects, and then to adopt a resolution that would establish the one-year pilot program for streamlined review for certain residential projects. And with that, I turn it back over to you, Mayor. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And thank you for the staff report. A lot of great information in there. Questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I was curious, when I attended the Planning Academy last month, it was interesting, I was asking a number of the area people I met of, within their cities and jurisdictions, do they have a design review, a separate design review board? And most of them did not. Or they had some variation, but it wasn't a separate design review board like we had. And so I was wondering if you have any information about some of the other jurisdictions in, in Marin County? And what some of the other ones have set up?
And thank you. We did have a look at our neighboring jurisdictions. And regarding the design review process, I believe we noted that Mill Valley, San and Selmo, Corder Madera, and Larkspur use a, a, a decision-making body, such as staff or zoning administrator or the planning commission for design review, that... And that Ross has a formal DRB that meets in advance of the city council reviewing a project. They don't have a planning commission.
I can just kind of add to that. So the county...
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Director, Community Development Director Judasee. Just wanted to add some of the information that we compiled. The Marin County actually has several design review boards that meet at different locations based on geography. And they actually review their, provide an opportunity for comment prior to the complete, the 30-day completeness review process that we typically, all jurisdictions are required to provide a comment back to the city, to the city staff within, sorry, all jurisdictions are required to provide comment back to the applicants within 30 days. So we, we provide that information to the applicants. The county actually goes through the design review process within those 30 days. However, staff does not participate in the design review process for that, for the county. As Jacob was saying, Ross has a formal design review board, goes to the city council for a final decision. Nevada also has a formal process. But all the other jurisdictions that we contacted are, they review their applications, their design review applications as part of the, the decision-making bodies of the planning commission. I would be making the decision if it's a planning commission review or the zoning administrator would be making the decision if it's a zoning administrator level. So I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Great, thank you. And the other question, we had talked about a little bit earlier, how many, based on the last couple of years, how many applicants would fall under this new streamline for doing the streamlined process? It's just, I'm curious about the volume.
Since 2019, we've had a total of four applications that would fall under the category that we're talking about here. You know, we looked at, Jacob and I actually looked at, you know, then what that next level would be. And we didn't see anything beyond that until you hit approximately 40 units. So there's a big gap, pretty significant gap between the 10 and the 40. So not a lot, but the next level would be, you know, a significantly larger project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I actually want to further clarify, for the town of Ross, their city council also acts as their planning commission. So just to be very clear, they wear two hats on that one. Additional questions? Okay. So with that, a public comment from anyone in the chamber? Okay. I will ask Madam City Clerk, if there are anyone who would like to give input via their hand raising, virtually, I don't know what we call that.
Virtually, that's great.
Virtually, yeah.
If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in, you'll need to press star nine to raise your hands. And I do see a couple of hands raised. For those of you calling in, you'll need to press star six, once I've inviting you, invited you to unmute.
Good evening. My name is Grace Garrity. I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin, and I've lived in Terre Linda for 35 years. We are extremely grateful that Jacob and staff took into account some of the items that the planning commission recommended and that we recommended in our February 24th letter regarding evaluating the newly named streamlined review process. There is just one item that we still feel needs to be strengthened and that, from staff report, that is, excuse me. And that's basically criteria for determining success of the project. Specifically, it doesn't state what parameter and what threshold of the parameter will determine whether the project should be continued, amended, or discontinued. And we recommend that that be clearly defined now in the beginning of pilot so that there is absolutely no confusion, you know, a year from now. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Grace.
We do have another hand raised. And I wanted to remind you, for those of you who are calling in, we will be muted. You will be muted once the two minutes has elapsed, but you may not be able to see the timer.
Hi, good evening. This is Victoria DeWitt. And I think this proposal really undermines all the hard work that was done to adopt the hillside design guidelines. Many of the remaining lots to be developed in San Rafael are on very challenging hillsides that benefit from the input and collaboration of five licensed architect professionals. Some of these projects are not designed by licensed architects. So they in particular benefit greatly from a full board review. Having attractive development that is compatible with the surrounding natural features and neighborhoods means the city receives more in property tax and transfer tax revenue. I think it's interesting to compare this proposal to other cities. And also, I think one question that needs to be asked is when the planning commission acts as the Design Review Board, how many of those planning commissioners are architects? Because currently, I'm not aware of any of our planning commissioners being architects. And I wonder with a nine-member board of seven planning commissioners and two Design Review Professionals, how that will work in a public meeting? And also, what if the design has to come back for a second look? I don't think this proposal allows a revision of the design. And as far as the outcome goes, I think we want to know that the quality and the design of the project is the same with the streamlined review. And I don't know how, how you would measure that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. So I heard two questions. Jacob, one's around criteria. How do we know whether we're successful or not in a year? What we'll be talking about? And then clarity around getting the appropriate architecture lens on any project that comes forward.
Right. Let me, I'll begin with the second question because it really, it seemed to relate to how will the planning commission meetings function with two Design Review Board representatives there? And around how will designs come back or be returned? The planning commission really contemplated this when they received the, the item for the pilot program. They recognized that they will have to do some work in the pilot program in order to determine what type of a, you know, what merits a return? What could be conditioned? Additionally, there, there is the capacity that the planning commission could refer a project to the, to this Design Review Board if in fact it is too contentious. And so that is to be worked out in the pilot program. And that's essentially why this is a one-year pilot program is to put a couple of projects before the planning commission and see how this works with, you know, staff participating with the Design Review Board, representatives, the planning commissioners to sort out how we, how we can make this effective and functional. That really leads into the criteria. And we did receive the letter from Responsible Growth Marin and was very appreciative of having the list of criteria in this. And I, I understand, we, staff understands the need to have some amount of evaluation clearly spelled out. And I understand, we, staff understands the need to have some amount of evaluation clearly spelled out. Although at this point, we held back from really clarifying what we should rank as success so that we can again begin this pilot program and really get a sense of what is going to mean, what does success mean in this? Can we really achieve a great amount of savings in time around reviewing projects? Are we able to maintain the, the, the quality of the design review? And so we have purposely not put into the pilot program what success means at this point, but do intend that at the end of the one-year pilot program, that that is going to be part of the evaluation and part of the discussion that the planning commission and the design review board has is what has this been successful and why has it been successful?
Thank you. And a follow-up question, and it relates to what Director Judy C. had said about how many projects there were between 2019 and 2020. So in one year, we might be talking about one project. Okay. Or zero, hopefully not zero. Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Did you have any other questions? If not, I will ask for comments. Yes. Do you have additional question?
Additional question. There was a comment about the Hillside Design Guidelines. Does that remove that from, no, remove that from the mix?
So the design review boards purview is, it kicks in at three units and more. Projects can be referred to the design review board from time to time. And I believe that, that they're through the history. Some projects that have been fewer than three units have been referred for the full board review, but it's not specifically spelled out in their purview that the projects of fewer than three units are reviewed by the design review board.
And I'll just add to that, that there are projects that are, don't require the full board review unless it's an exception or a deviation requested. And in those cases, we will be asking for the full board to provide input. So this would only be, you know, on a, in a normal situation, between three and 10, 10 units, where no exception is required, where there's no variance requested, where there's no deviation to the Hillside Design Guidelines. So the Hillside Design Guidelines would remain intact through this pilot program.
Thank you. So comments. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I, I think we need to do everything possible to streamline every process we have, and this one specifically, because we do hear from developers and we hear from applicants that some, it takes a long time to get, sometimes to get things through that should be very, that are small and simple. And I think that's what this change is addressing is sort of hopefully the small, simple, easy projects. And when I saw the dates of when, like when an applicant has come in to when it's been approved, it seems to be a very long time for some that would fall under this category. And hopefully that will speed up the process. So I, I definitely am supportive of anything we can do to make things go faster.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I'm going to give a little historical perspective because that's what drives my, my, my current view of this. On one hand, having spent a great deal of time on the planning commission, when, in a time when we would take turns being the liaison to the design review board, so you, by consequence, spend a lot of time on the design review board. I watched it happen in action and they do amazing work. This city would not look as great as it does if we did not have the design review board. So there's incredible value there. We need to capture that value. I was also in the room, this very room, in fact, when just a veritable parade of developers and would-be developers came and told us that our processes were too long, too expensive. And that was why housing was not getting built in San Rafael. So I feel we need to balance the strategic objectives of getting housing built with capturing the value that design review has historically brought to San Rafael. I think this is a first step, a fairly mild first step, very circumscribed in, in, in its beginning of a way to incorporate the, the design review value and perspectives in our process, but move the process forward faster. So I certainly support this pilot. I have two suggestions. First, when, you, you talk about metrics, which I think is the correct word, correct word, you're, these are metrics, these are data that we are going to collect about these projects. And then in the end, we are going to step back and take a fairly subjective evaluation and say, looking at this and looking at the end result, the buildings that are getting built, are, are they still as good as they would have been under the more cumbersome process? And I'm, I am absolutely ready to hear the, the professionals on the design review board and the planning commission's perspective on the, the end review of this pilot project. However, in light of the fairly limited number of projects that this will apply to, it seems to me that using a temporal limitation might not be sufficient. That is, one year, we might have zero. So that might not work. I would suggest that we add an and there. And, and one year and a specific number of projects, I would suggest as an opening number five projects. So that we get some through the process and we have a, a range of things to look at. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Yarand Skoladi.
Yeah, no, I echo the sentiment that we really want to have more housing in San Rafael and we want to streamline the, the process. I feel that this is a pretty safe way to go around it without staying with, you know, without doing the deviation. And, and I had this, the same question that Vice, Vice Mayor Kurtz about the how many? Because it seems that that could be really small. So I actually agree with Councilmember Bushy about like maybe extending the time or the number of projects. Because I think that's how we are really going to see if it actually, the pilot works and if it's effective. So, and the same thing about the metrics. I think it's important that we recognize what is a successful project. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I, I think having the one year and, probably not all, and five projects, I don't know if that we need to amend the ordinance. And we can either, you can weigh in or city attorneys there, we can actually have them nod or not nod about how specific we need to be.
Yeah, we, we believe we could make that change in the resolution and perhaps that would be at least one year and five projects.
Okay. I think that's excellent. And I'll just build on what my colleagues had said. I agree, the design review board has a great impact, positive impact on our community. And we know it has been an unintended barrier. And this is such a narrow applicability that yes, let's, as you said, a mild first step. So let, let's see what happens with the amendment we've just talked about. And I'm looking forward to it. And a big shout out and appreciation to the planning commission. I know that they really wrestled with this and dug really deep. And they'll be crucial to us assessing it after. So
Mayor Kate?
Yes.
So, so we actually have two things we're changing. One, in the ordinance, which I'm going to ask Jacob to repeat.
Okay.
That he mentioned during his staff report. And then the resolution where we have at at letter A, it says the streamlined review will operate for a temporary one-year term. Do we wish to add or five projects, whichever shall be later? Is that the idea that's being proposed?
So both of these.
I can adopt that language when you make your motion. Council, Vice Mayor Kurtz, do you have a question?
Sort of a clarification on that. So if we don't have five projects within a year, I still think there's value to bring it back within a year of either to have still a conversation and evaluation of the pilot, even if there isn't necessarily a project, because there's probably been some discussion. So I don't want to wait so long, like maybe we don't have, I mean, it's been four years and we had four projects. So we'll, you know, we want to make sure it still stays fresh in our mind. So I'm not sure what the wording needs to be, but it somehow.
So, yeah, we can do both ands. I think we can have an update. But I do think that the resolution should spell out that we need a certain number of projects in the actual pilot itself. And I think that's the part that we're adding. So, but we will have an update, even if it's a conversation update. Okay. So, yes.
Could we say unless earlier review is, or unless staff determines that earlier review would be appropriate or? I, I'm just, I'm just concerned about, about being arbitrary about the time.
Correct. Well, we need to have something to assess.
We need to have something to assess.
Yeah, I think at least a year would be necessary. I think that, if I'm following correctly, I think what you're, the the desire is to have at least enough projects to be able to really evaluate whether this is successful or not. But also to come back within a year to assure that it's kind of, it's fresh in our minds, that we are at least providing an update on what's happening and whether there, we've had an opportunity to evaluate any projects. And Councilmember Bushy, I think what you were suggesting would, would kind of try to address both of those. In that you're suggesting maybe that it would be, you know, within a year or five projects. And what you're trying to get to is that five projects may be longer than, yeah. So unless staff decides that, you know, before the five projects have been evaluated, that it would come back. I'm not sure if that's the way you.
Right. I want to put it into your discretion as to when you bring us back this report, rather than some date on the calendar that may have absolutely nothing to do with what's happening on the ground and in front of you. So what would be your preference?
I, I agree that waiting too long, waiting, you know, 10 years for the five projects to be, to come forward would be way too long. What I'm looking for is from our city attorney to see if there's a certain language we can propose that would address coming back within a certain timeframe.
So, so I would suggest, looking back at this resolution language, just had on my screen here, that we leave it at the year and that the staff come back and report at that time. It may be that we get five. I have no idea how many we're going to get. That's the problem that's being identified by Councilmember Bushy. And if there's been what staff and the council, when that meeting happens a year from now, deem insufficient number of projects to really evaluate, then the council can choose to extend the pilot at that time. And the staff would probably recommend that when it comes back, if, if it looks like there isn't enough data to really evaluate.
Okay. Councilmember Bushy, would that be acceptable? So there would be no amendment then on that second action?
So we're going to come back. So we're going to be here in a year and there might be no reason for us to be here. That's, that's my concern that.
But it gets at the update that Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Well, there's, yeah, there'll still be an update. I mean, it sounds like everybody wants a report in a year, even if nothing happens.
Let's have an update and then maybe it's on the content calendar or something.
Precisely. And then Jacob, are you still going to give us back the other language that's being proposed for amendment? Yes, that, that is correct. So just similar to the revision that I proposed, staff recommended for the resolution, that same language is echoed in the ordinance. So on page two of the ordinance, there is a, under section, a purpose and authority, under to streamline review for certain residential projects, there is an A and a B. And under A, it would read as residential structures of three to 10 units. So it's that same clear direction that the new development, new construction projects under the pilot program would be limited to three to 10 unit projects.
And as I understand it, for the motion, we could just say as amended, pass to print in ordinance as amended?
Well, yeah, the motion should request that the resolution be adopted and the ordinance be introduced, passed to print. And because this, this is the first meeting in which the ordinance is being introduced, we're able to make substantive changes like the one that's being proposed. At the next meeting, when the ordinance is being adopted, we can only make changes if there was like a typo or something like that. So it's, we can do this. You can simply pick up the language that Jacob just stated and adopt that in your motion.
And it is two different, two separate motions. So with that, Councilmember Bushy, take it away.
Okay. I move that we pass to print an ordinance amending a section of 14.25.070 of Title 14 of the San Rafael Municipal Code to establish streamlined review for certain residential projects with the definitional corrections and changes that staff has proposed tonight.
And on second. Oh, excellent. Moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarand Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. One more then. This is the resolution.
Resolution. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing, or I'm sorry, establishing a one-year pilot program for streamlined review of certain residential projects.
And, and I guess that, that too is going to have the amended language about the three to 10 at section A of the resolution.
Including the, the revisions just described by our city attorney.
Is your second, second stance? Okay. Moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarand Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you so much. Oh, Jacob's already left. Thank you so much. Good conversation. The, welcome Chief Spiller. Our next item is adoption of military equipment funding, acquisition and use policy and compliance with Assembly Bill 481. Nice to see you. Nice to have you in the chambers. You said it's your first time here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is great to be in the room. Thank you. The item before you tonight is the adoption of policy on military equipment funding and acquisition pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Also, the consideration of adopting an ordinance, adding chapter 2.52 to the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled Police Acquisition and Use of Military Equipment. This is before you as a result of new legislation. In 2020, 2021, California Legislature passed Assembly Bill 481. That is now codified in sections of the government code 7070, 7071 and 7072. These new statutes are intended to increase transparency and create additional oversight to law enforcement use of military equipment as it's defined in the Assembly Bill. It further provides safeguards to protect, protect the public's welfare, safety and civil liberties. With this new legislation effective January 1st, 2022, law enforcement organizations are now required to have a written policy on the use of specific military equipment. This military equipment is defined within the Assembly Bill 481. In addition to written policy, the San Rafael Police Department, as with any state or local law enforcement agency wishing to acquire or use specifically defined military equipment, they must have the approval through adoption of an ordinance by the governing body. So this ordinance formally accepts draft policy as well as the clearly defined inventory of equipment owned by the agency. Assembly Bill 481 also requires that in order for a law enforcement organization to continue to use specific, specifically defined military equipment that we've had before January 1st, the agency must begin the ordinance approval process by May 1st. So pursuant to the legislative requirement, the San Rafael Police Department has prepared a draft military equipment funding and acquisition policy coupled with the detailed equipment list and is bringing it to the council this evening for consideration in advance of that May 1st date. The San Rafael Police Department Draft Policy, Section 706, which is attached to your council report, consists of both a policy document as well as a separate required inventory of the equipment that's owned by the police department. It's defined by the statute as military equipment. Assembly Bill 481 defines military equipment within 15 specific categories. And the San Rafael Police Department does possess a modest inventory of equipment that meets the legislative definition of military equipment. I think what's important to call out for tonight's conversation is the department is not seeking new or additional equipment or inventory, but we're working to affirmatively and responsibly report what inventory the department does possess in the legislative spirit of Assembly Bill 481. The police department here in San Rafael maintains an inventory of select items as defined in the statute. These items are in the police department inventory and they're authorized by department policy specifically for the safe and peaceful resolution to situations involving lack of suspect compliance and in some cases, active suspect resistance. And I would like to underscore for the conversation that the police department values the sanctity of all human life and consistently pursues the safe resolution to all situations and that the police department values the sanctity of all human life and consistently pursues the safe resolution to all situations and events for all involved, including potential suspects, non-involved community members, as well as the officers involved. Generally speaking, the equipment, excuse me, that the department possesses allows for time, for distance, and for de-escalation in critical incidents. I would also like to call out for the council's attention and so the community is aware, the San Rafael Police Department does not utilize or possess any equipment procured from the United States Department of Defense 1033 program. 1033 program is a reference to section 1033 of the National Defense Authorization Act of 1997. It was simply surplus equipment that local jurisdictions could use when the federal government has done with it. We don't have any of that in inventory. The police department's draft policy includes a process which is currently in place and it, it exists to communicate concerns or complaints to the city of San Rafael, to the police department's website for members of the public. Additionally, the public can submit questions about any specific type of military equipment or its use to the organization. As legislated in Assembly Bill 481, policy also requires that each year the department will prepare an annual report for the city council's review and consideration. The report will include such items as the use of any of this military equipment, any complaints that we've received or concerns that we've received, any internal audits or other information about potential violations of the new policy, as well as cost impacts and other similar information. The annual report will be presented to the city council for consideration and approval, and then it will be made available on the department's website. The first annual report should come to the council on or about May of 2023. So the proposed ordinance for your consideration tonight seeks to implement the requirements of Assembly Bill 481. The proposed ordinance would add a new chapters 2.52 to the San Rafael Municipal Code and establish a procedure for annual compliance with the requirements of Assembly Bill 481. Under the procedures established in the new municipal code, the city council will be required to review the department's military equipment policy again next year and annually thereafter when the department provides its yearly report to the council. An important element of the new legislation is transparency and community engagement. To that end, I think it's important to share that the department pushed a lot of this information on this topic via social media to the community as well as the publication of all detail relative to the new legislation on the department's website. We received local media coverage on the topic, including details centering on a community meeting, which staff facilitated on March 28th. This community meeting was a well-publicized community engagement presentation on Assembly Bill 481. During the presentation, staff discussed new legislation and spoke in detail about funding, acquisition and the use of the equipment that we do have in inventory. We received one comment of support as in regards to our policy, one question, one clarifying question and no opposition to the policy or its use of the equipment. The department has uploaded the presentation that was recorded on March 28th to the police department's transparency page. And a Spanish transcription of the presentation is also available on the website. In consideration of the topic tonight, there's no new fiscal impact as a result of this policy. As outlined in the policy, each request for any new purchase of defined military equipment will be brought before the city council for review and approval. So there are a couple of options for you to potentially consider. Option number one would be to pass, to pass the ordinance to print, adding a new chapter 2.52 to the San Rafael Municipal Code and to approve the police department's policy, Section 706 on Military Equipment Funding and Acquisition. Alternatively, the council may choose not to pass the ordinance to print and provide further direction to staff. As far as recommended action, staff recommends the council pass the ordinance to print, subsequently approving the department's draft policy. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you if there's any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Yes. Councilmember Bushy.
Thanks so much, Chief. My question is about the acquisition of military vehicles, and I guess I'm primarily interested in vehicles, other than by purchase, if they were given or somehow through some other process. Would, what would that require council approval as well?
It would if it meets the definition within the assembly bill. So if it's like an armored vehicle or a tracked armored vehicle, those would require the council's authorization before we took possession.
Okay. So any acquisition of these vehicles require council?
Regardless of how it's funded, whether it's funded from budget, whether it's a grant, whether it's, you know, donated by the government, any, any acquisition.
Great. Thank you. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you. For Micah, any questions?
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much for the explanation. I really appreciate it. So so I was just curious, in your opinion, the fact that this came as, you know, in the legislature for all the cities is, and I see a lot of, you know, robots and armor, you know, cars and, and also some of the less than lethal impacts. So in your opinion, how do you see this new law? Is that like an improvement for it? Because I assume that we already have, you know, enough weapons. Do we need to have military and, but it seems that maybe the ones we have, they are not modern enough?
So I think transparent, all transparency is good. I think having this discussion is good. It's healthy for the community. I think it's good for the community to understand. You know, what equipment we're using. I think it's great for this body to understand what equipment that we're using. The definition of military equipment as captured in the assembly bill could be interpreted differently by different people. But the equipment that we have in inventory, some of the equipment that we have actually meets that definition. Some of the less lethal equipment, some of the, you know, we, we share an armored rescue vehicle with the city of Nevada. Those are, in my opinion, very good tools that can provide an escape or evacuation means for somebody who's in distress. It can protect law enforcement personnel. In the case of an active shooter, it can allow crisis negotiations personnel closer to an individual who we're trying to communicate with to de-escalate the situation. So I think that the equipment that we have is necessary, but I all, I would also offer, as I previously stated, I think we have a modest amount of this equipment that's defined in the legislation.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. I don't have any questions. So members of the public, I'll open public comment on this item. Members of the public in person. I'll get the hang of it. Okay. Not seen any virtual public comment?
I see no public comment now. I'll give everyone a few minutes and remind everyone that if they'd like to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And unless there aren't any other questions, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We just have the one, right?
Yes.
Passed a print and ordinance adding new chapter 2.52 to the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled Police Acquisition and Use of Military Equipment and approving the San Rafael Police Department's policy 706 Military Equipment Funding Acquisition and Use Policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you so much, Chief. Appreciate that and appreciate the community engagement you did on this issue. Thank you. Next agenda item, Third Street Safety Improvement Project. Welcome Deputy DPW Director April Miller. I don't know if I got your title right, but usually it's written on the bottom of your screen. Don't have that. There we go.
Definitely a different process. We're having to share the, as if we're on Zoom as well.
I know.
We are sharing the presentation, so it takes a few minutes longer than usual.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for having me tonight. April Miller, Assistant Director of Public Works. Tonight, I'm going to go over the Third Street Safety Project. So I presented a few times here with, in regards to the Third Street, that we have a couple of different projects going on. Currently under construction is the Third Street Rehabilitation Project, which was presented at City Council back in February. Tonight is the Third Street Safety Project. As you can see on the map, the Third Street Safety Project is the orange circles. So that includes the Lindaro intersection, Lincoln intersection, and Grand Avenue intersection. And on those intersections, we're doing traffic signal improvements, accessibility upgrades, and different safety lighting. I'll go over a little bit more of that in detail later. Then as shown also is the, is the rehab project, which is all of Third Street from the high school all the way to where it hits Second Street and then Second Street all the way to the Miracle Mile, Fourth Street intersection. So tonight's objectives is we would like to request that city council awards the construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Jalati Brothers. We're also asking to approve and authorize the execution of a professional services agreement for park engineering. And that's for the construction management, material testing and inspection services. In addition, we would like to recommend the proven authorization of an amendment to the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn. So our project goals for this project, improve safety for all users. This is a federal grant that's specific to the traffic signal operations at these intersections. So we're going to improve pedestrian crossing. There's some drainage improvements we're going to do, and we're also expanding and connecting the communication network. So we're actually picking up the Francisco East project installed communication. And we're going to pick up that and connect it to the downtown system. So one of the key intersections long this, within this project limit is the Lindaro and Lutens intersection. We've presented this a couple of times at City Council. We presented first as an informational report and we received a lot of feedback from the community and we went back to the drawing board and then presented it at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. And then again at City Council a few months ago. So what we did, our initial proposal was to, was showing the driveway at Walgreens, which is a city-owned parking lot, as closed. But after discussions with the public, we've come up with a win-win solution where we are showing an exit only. And this allows people who are exiting the parking lot to get down to all the neighborhoods to the south. The other key intersection is the Grand Avenue intersection. At this intersection, we're doing signal upgrades, safety lighting for pedestrians. We're also doing the accessibility upgrades. And then, as I mentioned, this is, this is where we connect the communication fiber from Francisco East. Well, while I have everybody here tonight, I'm going to do a little bit of a construction update since we're currently under construction, which started March of this year. So the Third Street Rehab and Safety Project will both be done concurrently. The Safety Project probably won't actually break ground for about six months. That's our lead time for traffic signal equipment right now. So we're going to wait to actually start improving the intersections till we're closer to actually getting the equipment on hand. And, but the Third Street Rehab Project will continue to be constructed. So right now, to date, we have installed the Marin Municipal Water District Water Main from Lindaro down to East Street. And we're currently working on all the side streets right now to make the connections into their water system. Another big improvement that we've recently done is we removed all the medians on Second Street between Shaver and Fourth Street. We did that in this in order to, it's for our construction sequencing. We have a new retaining wall that's going in along the hillside of Second Street so that we can install that class four bike path that we talked about previously. So we've paved over the medians so we can shift lanes over and we're able to continue with our construction. I just wanted, I threw in this slow for the cone zone. We've received several reports that people continue to speed even though we have an active construction site. So just a reminder to everybody to please slow down through our construction zone. And also, we've had, we've had several comments about construction starting early. So on the westbound direction due to the, the traffic volumes during the commuter time, we've actually allowed the contractor to start at 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM in order to give them a full shift of work. Otherwise, if we start later, then the construction duration will last even more than a year and a half. So we're trying to maintain a workday. And then the eastbound direction, it switches since people are coming into work. We're starting later. So that's from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then we're, we're going to start, start some sewer work in near Mars. So that's going to be full closure. There'll be separate noticing to that neighborhood specifically. I'm going to go into a little bit of night work next. So night work is going to start soon. So due to the traffic that occurs underneath Highway 101, we decided that closing a lane during the day would affect and potentially back up onto Highway 101 and just be back up all through the city streets. So any work that requires a lane closure underneath the highway needs to be done at night. So that includes the MMWD water line and the SRSD sewer pipeline. So that work, based on the efficiency of the water project so far, we're anticipating that to start mid-May and go for about two months. The sewer work, we're still waiting for our pipe to arrive. There's, we still have shortages on pipe in our industry right now. So that's going to take about three work, three weeks. And hopefully we find out soon and can hopefully do those at the same time to, to reduce the impact to the public. So what, what we've requested from the contractor is the loudest operations occur first thing we allow night work to start. So in some cases, we're allowing night work to start at 6:00 PM. And then underneath the highway, we're going to wait till 7:00 PM for that to start. So any saw cutting, jackhammering, the pothole is a loud operation too. That's going to happen in the first part of the evening. And there's still going to be noise at night, but just not as loud of noise. So hopefully we can, we'll just keep communicating with the public so that we can let you know when that's going to finish up. And then at the very end of the project, when all of the improvements for both the Safety and Rehab Project are complete, we will be paving this, we'll be grinding and paving the street and striping all at night. So here's the project funding. It's a federal grant. So that's where the project has been separated out from the rehab project because this is just specific to a few intersections. So we separated the two projects. And we're also using traffic mitigation fund and some of our gas tax. So for additional, additional information for anybody who would like to follow the project, we keep an up-to-date Third Street Rehab website, which includes both the Rehab and Safety Project. We also send out weekly emails to anybody who would like to be notified. And these include what happened on the project this week, what's proposed to happen next week. And, you know, if there, if we know that, for instance, we're going to start night work, that will also be identified and let you know, we anticipate that happening in a few weeks. So if anybody would like to be added to the list, they can either go to the city website or email thethirdstreet@cityofsanrefel.org. And that's it.
Thank you. And we appreciate you taking the time. In addition to what's in front of us, the resolutions of the expanded presentation about the update. I think that was good timing. So any questions you can ask, question about the update or about the resolutions in front of us? Your question, Vice Mayor?
I do have a question around the, on the update. The Caltrans work underneath the freeway, is that going to start up again? I know it had to be put on pause. Birds? I don't remember. I think it was birds, right? Birds. So is that going to be starting up again? And will that coincide with this work as well?
Yeah, the, the in-water work, which is, there's, Caltrans only has a few more weeks left. That's anticipated, that can't start until June. But they are planning on starting to do some of their curb ramp work and their work that's outside of the water sometime in the next few weeks.
Okay. So, so there is a potential that those are going to coincide, that we'll have the Caltrans work happening and the Third Street work at the same time. Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Bushy.
A quick question about the night work on east of, east of the freeway in my district. On what, the loudest stuff is supposed to be first. Okay. So what can we expect? Okay, so what can we expect in the not loudest stuff? That's my first question. Second question is, will there be at least one lane open at all times? Or will the road be completely closed?
Yes, your your first question, you'll probably hear backup alarms. You'll hear sometimes they need to actually excavate, so there'll be an excavator, and then they dump the dirt into their trucks to offhaul. So this most and then they'll be installing the line, which shouldn't be very noisy. But there are some cases where they're using steel, so they need to weld. So there'll be welding that's going to be happening. As I forgot your second question, sorry.
Street, will there be lanes open?
Yeah, there'll be at least one lane open at all time. In some cases, they'll probably have two lanes open at the beginning because for the most part, the work does occur mostly in one lane. But a minimum one traveling will be open.
Okay, and it'll all be wrapped up by the end of June?
End of year. Oh, yes. Oh, no, wait. You're talking about night work?
The night work, yes.
The night work is anticipated to last eight weeks, so starting in mid-May to mid-July.
So just eight weeks. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, yes.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. So I guess my question is, can you coordinate with Caltrans? I had a similar question then, Vice Mayor Kurtz. Like the the really loud time, can you do Caltrans and this project at the same time, very loud? So and and I guess this is the time to do it because I I'm just thinking about kids and finals and everything that's happening. So this is we cannot really delay, right? This is it, like for the the loudest part of the project.
Yes.
Yeah.
I want to jump into this one because Caltrans is working.
Director Guerin, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Yes, just so people know who you are.
Introducing myself. Thank you, Mayor. The Caltrans is had to stop their work in November because their project is in water, and there is a moratorium on construction in water during the winter months. So they are starting up again. We have a tank that needs to be removed in the right at the beginning, the intersection of Second Street and the freeway off-ramp. That's something that the city is going to take care of in the short term. Caltrans will then begin work, as as April said, with the the traffic signals and the curb work. As soon as they can get in the water, they intend to get in the water and get that part of the work done. They have one more three-day weekend full closure, which they are anticipating using at some point. But most of the rest of the work, the noisiest part of the work is is done at this point. The 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 pile driving and all the work that was so noisy early on, it was it has been mostly accomplished. All the the form work in the water is done. They just have a little more work in the water, as April said, two more weeks worth of work that they have to do. And then they're going to be putting the deck down and restoring the rest of the the off-ramp. So it's it's there is a misconception that Caltrans sort of walked away from that project. That's that's certainly not true. They're anxious to get back, and we've had meetings with them on site to sort of anticipate what's going to happen there. And they're really anxious to get that project wrapped up. It does coincide with the with the construction project. Ours is going on for, you know, the better part of a year and a half. Theirs will wrap up this fall sometime, and they'll be finished with their project. They'll restore the the, you know, planted area next to the off-ramp and do the work that they need to do there. So it's it's exciting that it's finally going to be finished, and they will coincide together. I think, you know, frankly, the traffic coming off the freeway is flowing now well, and it's going to continue to be at least where it is now. And then they will expand into those other lanes. So the the traffic aspect of it, the 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 most difficult part of the traffic aspect is done now. And so it's going to get better from here, so to speak, not worse.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Before you leave, Councilwoman Bushy, oh, wait. Hold on one second. Do you have another question for the director?
Yeah, well, it was it was a do you want to follow up on that one?
Well, I was going to ask a question to the director. Do you have a question, Director?
See? We're figuring it out. It's so exciting. We're all in person. So why don't you finish with your question? Why don't you ask yours, and then Councilwoman Michael will finish.
Okay, mine's very simple. Is Caltrans going to be working at night, other than on the weekend closure?
They will be they'll they will be working at night at different times. They haven't provided us a full schedule yet, so we don't know exactly when they're going to be working, but they certainly will be working at night.
And do we have any estimate of when the the weekend closure might be?
They didn't give us that so far. They have not said.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Councilwoman Yurin.
So my question was like, how are we going to inform the community? You know, we attended the meeting with with economic development in downtown, and they were very well versed on Third Street, and they have a great suggestion about maybe putting some signs about your tax dollars at work. I think it would be really important for people to know what's happening, maybe even some visuals, but also communicate, especially the night work.
Yeah, thank you. We did, we liked that comment as well, and we're working on those signs as we speak.
And one more, we're we're actually currently working on a fax sheet mailer to send out for everybody within a mile radius of the project. And they'll also include night work and reference to the city's website and how to sign up for weekly updates.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. I don't see any further questions at this time, so I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone in the council chambers like to comment on this item?
Good evening, Jean Severinghouse. I've been supporting this project as well as the rehabilitation project for seven years, really since Mayor Kate was on a Safe Routes to School task task force audit with us. And it's very exciting to see it move to contract. So I'm basically just speaking in support that go forward. And I have a question, and that is whether the Grand Street intersection, so it's really that those two intersections have been quite difficult for people on on foot as well as on bike. And will the new Grand Street, whatever it's going to be called, the the pathway on the east side up to Fourth Street, is that going to be done in conjunction with this, or is that later?
So what we'll do is get all the questions, and then we'll answer them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Jean. Hello, Patrick.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Seider from WTB, WTB Tam. And I can't hide my glasses or not not just seeing me read my notes like we used to be able to do. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and to support two great sustainable mobility projects. The first one is the Third Street Safety Improvement Project we're talking about now, and the second one, the Marydale Northgate Promenade. I'd first like to start in the Third Street Project and recognize the leadership of the Department of Public Works to make the critical sustainable mobility elements segments of this a reality. And that's, you know, Bill Guerin and Rafat Rayi and April Miller and Lauren Devaney. They've just done a tremendous job to herald this project through. And as you may know, that this this is this segment being built is a cross Marin Trail, which in the 2010 study connected San Rafael with Fairfax and is really one of the major critical sustainable mobility elements in Marin County. And you are you are investing and preserving and recognizing that this part, this cross Marin Trail is going to be a reality, and this is going to serve as an anchor for everybody else that's in the county to see. And so I would like to thank you for that. I'd like to thank everybody involved for making this project a reality.
Thank you. Additional comments in the chamber? Not seen at this moment, virtual public comment.
If you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raise hand feature, or if by calling in, you can press star nine now, and you will have two minutes to provide public comment. I do see a hand raised.
Hello, councilmembers and Mayor Kate. I just, this is Kate Powers. I'm a resident of North San Rafael and a member of San Rafael's BPAC. And I just wanted to say that the BPAC has had three presentations of the project, and I I'm really pleased with the public process on this project. I think that the Department of Public Works has done an excellent job in keeping the public informed, and I just wanted to also state my continuing support for the process and for this project. Thank you.
Mr. Mooney, are you there?
I'm here, yeah, if you're ready. I'm also calling to speak in support of the city signing these resolutions with the project. My family lives in Gerson Park, and we choose to use bikes and our feet as our primary form of transportation around the city. And I've been following the progress of this closely, and April and Lauren and the rest of city staff have been excellent. The project itself looks excellent. The bike and pedestrian improvements are sorely needed in all of these locations. And personally, I'm looking forward to the day that I could comfortably navigate to the west end on my cargo bike and safely run along that stretch with my two-year-old and five-year-old girls, and this project will help me do it. So I encourage you to continue supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no further public comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment, and thank you. We always like to hear accolades of DPW. We know that, and it's always nice when you hear it in public comment. So I did hear a question from Jean regarding the specifically the Grand Avenue intersection. If you could answer that.
Yes, the project that we're doing at Grand Avenue is actually widening in anticipation of doing that project, but it's a federally funded project, so we we could not extend the project that you're that we're requesting that you approve tonight to include it. But we're currently in the design process, which would, and that project includes doing a Class Four cycle track from the intersection of Second and Grand to the intersection of Fourth and Grand. And so this this project, we wouldn't have to tear out this project in order to achieve that. So we'll be coming back to council sometime later this summer to award that project.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any further questions? Not seen any. I would entertain the many motions on this. So who wants to start? Start on it.
May I have a few, just a brief comment?
Oh, yes.
And I would be happy to to read some of the motions as well, but I feel compelled to draw our attention to Kate Powers' comments about the transparency of our staff and our staff working with the community, and particularly the example of the exit from Walgreens, how our team listened to the community and devised a win-win solution for everyone. I have recently seen what happens from a different agency when those processes are not followed. And it is night and day, and it is just refreshing to see something so professionally executed on behalf of our residents in true public service. It's just it's just awesome to be a part of programs that come to fruition like this. So thank you for indulging me in that little speech making and to earn my keep. I will start reading resolutions here. So I move that we adopt a resolution awarding.
Go to page six. Isn't it these three?
Oh, I started from the beginning. Sorry. Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution awarding and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction agreement for the Third Street Safety Improvements HSIP L 5043 0432 Jalati Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $2,236,926 and authorizing contingency funds in the amount of $263,074 for a total appropriated amount of $2,500,000.
A second. Moved in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero.
All right.
Your share? Okay.
All right. Recommended action, adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Park Engineering, Inc. for construction management, materials, testing, and inspection services associated with the Third Street Safety Improvements Project HSIP L 5043 043 in the amount of $258,499 in a form approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yurin Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Okay, now do the last one. Yes, yes.
So I make a motion to approve the to the resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for construction support services associated with the Third Street Safety Improvements Project HSIP L 5043 043 in the amount of $40,000 for a new total professional services agreement of $320,000 in a form approved by the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you, April. Thank you, Bill. And oh, and you still get to stay up here? Director Guerin, oh, no. No, April, April's done. The next item is the Marydale Road Multi-Use Path Connection Alternatives. There's been a lot of conversation around this, so I'm sure that's why our chambers are full. And to eat the cupcakes after. Can't leave without getting a cupcake. Okay, turn it over to you, Director Guerin.
I'm glad I didn't eat one while I was out in the hall.
Oh, you could have had one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bill Guerin with the Department of Public Works, here with an informational item regarding the Marydale Promenade, Northgate Promenade is another name for it, along Marydale Road, connecting the Northgate Shopping Mall to the the Smart Station underneath the freeway. This is a connection that's critical to Terlinda Neighborhood and the Smart Civic Center Station. It was identified in 2018 Bike Pad Master Plan as a Class One path. It's been under consideration for a lot longer than that, though. The connection is critical to a major employment center of the Northgate Mall. We've worked extensively with a group of community members on this project for many, many years, just just trying to develop it to a place where we could go after grant funding. The pandemic halted our pursuit of funding, so we have been kind of inactive for a while, but it's now time to to resurrect this project because the new development at at Northgate is, you know, considering building this path, and certainly the development there is going to precipitate doing something here to connect Northgate and the the rest of the Terlinda area to the Civic Center Smart Station, which you, as you know, can go through there to the Civic Center itself and onto the the schools that are on North San Pedro Road. So it's an important connection in San Rafael. I'm going to go through several options, starting at the north end adjacent to the Northgate Mall itself. You may be familiar with the Northgate Three development. The old tire dealership, car dealership that was at the corner there is now being converted to other uses. But you can see the path goes in the right of way entirely along the edge of the road, maintaining 12-foot travel lanes and a 12-foot bike path through there, goes past the the shopping center parking lot itself. You can see the cutout for the driveway there, and then on to Marydale Road. It rounds the corner, continuing as a 12-foot path underneath the the overpass and ends up on Marydale Road heading down towards the Civic Center Smart Station. The four options are, there's two, well, I'll just start by saying, there's been a lot of discussion about parking on this this bike path and the Marydale Road. There's a lot of sentiment in the community to have a a more pastoral setting, I guess is one way to put it, where where parking would not be allowed. It would simply be a turnaround for people being dropped at the at the Smart Station and the ADA parking space, which is an important function in any kind of development like this. So there there's a sentiment in in the community. I think you've seen some correspondence that that the less parking, the better. But we think that parking is an important function of a public street, so we're presenting four options, one of which is no parking, two of them are options that provide partial parking in different ways. And then there's also an option to provide 15 spaces plus an ADA space. So just to to orient you, this is the one of the partial parking options. I just wanted to point out a few of the features here. The the bike path itself is shown in blue. There's a fire truck turnaround at the base of the the Marydale Drive, and the ADA spot is right there at the very end of the street where the entrance to the storage facility is. The green area is, you know, bioswales and and, you know, storm capture devices. The sort of yellowish area shown in the plan is the Los Colinas Valley Sanitation District Pump Station. We've been working with the pump station with Los Colinas Valley to acquire an easement there. We have not acquired that yet, but we're in process of trying to get that now. We would do some reconfiguration of their entrance in and out of their facility to facilitate their movements. You know, they have large trucks with trailers, so we're going to accommodate what they need in terms of the development here so that hopefully, you know, we're helping them, they're helping us, and we'll have a compatible situation where where the pump station will be easily accessed and serviced, and we'll have a good turnaround for fire trucks. So in this scheme, we're proposing eight parking spaces. In this case, they're In this case, they're all parallel to the, see if I can do this, to the, I guess it's the sort of east side of the road. They're lined up here next to the bike path itself. There is bioswale area, and again, over here, there's no parking on this side of the street. But this does maintain two travel lanes in and out, and then eight parking spaces. And again, the ADA parking spaces at the very end here. The option B puts the parking on the other side of the street. Again, there was some, a lot of concern expressed that, you know, having cars parked immediately adjacent to the bike path might be dangerous in terms of doors opening and and the sort of conflict that might occur there. So we looked at an option that also pushes the same number of parking spaces to the other side of the street and maintains more green space adjacent to the promenade itself. You can see the area that's cut out there. In in this location is is cut out simply because we need to have access for an exit for the vehicles coming out of the the pump station itself. The full parking option kind of takes advantage of both sides of the street and provides 15 spaces altogether. That that is is what we consider to be fully parked, given that we need to have stormwater retention and other facilities here. The street right now is is just a dirt, excuse me, a dirt, you know, side of the road, and and a number of cars can park there today. But we think this is a nice configuration in terms of having a a parked facility with with green space and a 12-foot bike path through there. And then finally, obviously, the last option is the all all no parking option. That would would maintain a green space adjacent to the bike path itself, tighten up the driveway that's coming out of there, mainly because you don't have, you have more maneuvering room because there's no cars parked on the side of the road. So it gives the trucks an opportunity to come sort of straight out and then turn on to the on to the road itself. Again, the four options are partial parking, eight spots plus an ADA spot. There's two different versions of that. Full parking, which includes 15 normal parking spaces and an ADA parking space, and no parking, which is just the ADA space only. Just for everybody's information, in pre-COVID, we did a number of parking counts associated with this facility. The average was 22 per day. That happens to be when the the Guide Dogs for the Blind was in construction, and we understood that some of the cars parked there were probably, you know, Guide Dogs volunteers that were using the street as opposed to the parking spaces in in the Guide Dogs facility. But we have 15 spaces. We had an average of 22 at that time. And then again, the easement with Los Galinas Valley Sanitation District is still to be acquired, and we're working on that with them. That that's my report. This is an informational report, and I'd love to hear any feedback that the council would like to provide.
Great. Vice Mayor Kurtz. Questions and feedback. You can give feedback at the same time because it's an informational report.
I guess, let's see. In terms of questions. Between on on option, I'm sorry.
Or comments.
Or comments. You know, between option B and no park, I'm trying to compare the amount of green space. I mean, this is a, it is a highly used pedestrian and bike path, but it's not necessarily, I don't necessarily consider it like a park path. Like, it because it's right next to the freeway. If if you're not familiar with this path, it's it's a dead end. So the only, very few cars actually, you have to know about it to know about it. So it's not highly used, aside from pedestrian and bike right now. And I think the for the access to the Smart Train requiring parking, I think there's no, there's no parking right now for the Smart Train in that for that station. So that's that's a frustrating piece for me. I don't have any questions really right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Other ones? Yes. Councilmember Bushy.
A couple of quick questions. First, so we have no parking counts after the pandemic, post-pandemic.
We have not done any recent counts, though.
Okay. And this is. We've received comment from the from the public opposed to creating parking. In all of my time, I can't remember that that has ever happened, where people have come forward and and asked for no parking. Do you have any recollection of that ever occurring?
Third Street. They didn't want parking on Third Street, second, the entrance to San Rafael.
Being opposed to it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Being opposed to parking that we could have. Okay, all right, that's a, that's a.
And that that was a trade off of the bike path versus parking.
Right.
In that case. No, it's uncommon, I think, to to not want parking. But in this case, the the community members that have been very active with this project are are looking to reduce the amount of parking spaces as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. But yeah, Councilmember Mike.
You know, I was thinking that if you go to the top of Elizabeth Way in San Valle, I'm sure that the the owners, you know, the homeowners are not, they don't really appreciate people parking there because they go, you know. No, thank you so much for the report. It's great that we are having so many places that people can go biking. I I think it's interesting about the parking. I don't know what's the solution for the Smart Train, if there's no parking there. But it's like, if there were only 22 parking spots before COVID, many of them were coming from a different facility that the parking was under construction. You know, I I think if you have to add parking, it doesn't seem that you need to add parking. But if you have to, I will definitely suggest to do it on the other side because there is definitely a risk to open doors and, you know, people biking. So that that would be my comment, I guess. And then I don't know what is, if we have like any regulation, you know, like biking that you pedal versus electric bikes, speed limits and things like that. But I don't know, when you're designing this, if that's something that you guys are keeping in mind for safety.
Bike riders can still use the street. So accomplished bike riders typically will ride on the street rather than on the bike path itself. But the bike path is 12 feet, so it's very generous for bikes of all different types to use it if they feel comfortable on it.
Yeah. It seems like the perfect place to have like bike lanes and pretty safe, so it's great.
Thank you. So I had a question. I think we had our walking audit right before the pandemic. I know that Shirley was there and Kate was there. I can't remember who else was there. I think it was right before. Yep. And there was discussion about trees, and you didn't mention anything about trees. The trees on the side, I think it was on the side of Guide Dog, so.
And and adjacent to the cemetery. We still are proposing to remove a couple of trees there, but we've minimized the the amount of trees that are being removed.
Okay. No, that is helpful. Yeah, and I'll be, I will open up to the public and get their comments. I do have to say, as a San Rafael's representative on the smart board, it seems a disconnect to me to have a smart station with no parking. I I'm not sure how we defend that as saying we're serious about supporting smart, and we don't have the opportunity to park there. I I actually can't figure out how I could say no parking and say, but Smart's important to us, that is successful. So I don't know the answer maybe that.
Yes. In terms of the bike path, between the bike path and the road, would it look like the one that's on Civic Center Drive, where there's actually pylons between the cars and, isn't that, isn't there a divided route line?
We're not proposing pylons in this location. The the bike path adjacent to Northgate Mall is that it has a sidewalk as well as a bike path. It's a, it's an even larger facility than this one is, and a little bit different in design. But we're proposing that it's a, is simply a 12-foot bike path adjacent to either parking or some green space, depending on which of the options we select.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll open it up to public comment of those in the chambers. I see our reigning Citizen of the Year coming down. Shirley Fisher, nice to see you in person.
Strange to be here in person.
No, it's fantastic.
Shirley Fisher, TerreLinda. I'd like to just say that I'd like to give a little historic first. I'd like to say thank you for being a part of the citizen group that worked on this project, that DPW was very welcoming to citizen involvement, so this is a really good precedent. Historical perspective, the North San Rafael Vision started in 1996 with 200 people at the TerreLinda High School, 56 meetings, 3,500 written comments, came up with two things, wanting a center for the community at Northgate and a linear spine promenade to connect the community east and west that got separated when Highway 101 got made a four lane. The promenade was to be a pleasant, welcoming place for people, kids, strollers, kids on small bikes, people, little gathering places along the way for people to be able to use as a connector of their community. We see this segment as a really key portion, and it's the middle of a multiple transit. It's the gateway from transit to Northgate. It's where the new people at Northgate are going to get to the transit. We think it's very important to preserve the environment there. There are ways this can be designed where you don't need to remove any trees. In fact, it very possibly the the opportunity to make it a world-class pedestrian walkway that is a green space with swales to handle the water, the stormwater and also trees. I think that this, there's purple pipe along there for irrigation. You can put up vegetation to to protect you from the city. I think it's very important that parking be on the east side where the transit is, where it was supposed to be until they built the roundabout. You know, there is a lot of reason why it should be on the Guinness and in the parking lots over there. Don't get people coming down here trying to make U-turn looking for parking spaces and conflicting with the pedestrian traffic going down. So we see this as a real opportunity and many, many reasons why you should not have people coming down this dead-end street looking for parking, turning around, coming back. That it, I think Guide Dogs is not having the same kind of needs as they were earlier. And I thank you very much for the chance to talk tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for your ongoing involvement on this. Okay, yep. Next, welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Hartzell with WTB Tam. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor Cullen, and thank you, Director Garrett, for your presentation this evening. So I want to speak a little bit about what this proposed pathway actually connects to and what its role is in the community and the region as at at large. So literally, on one end and the other, it connects Northgate, the future Northgate Town Square, 900-plus new housing units that are going to be added to our community. And it is a direct connection for those future San Rafael residents to reach the Smart Station. It's also a direct connection for them to walk to or ride a bike to the farmer's market, any show at the Marin Center, the Marin County Fair. So these are enormous, big, multi-trip generating events that you can take off hundreds, thousands of cars from the roads, hundreds of thousands over time. Even if we step back a minute, it's not just a connection between Northgate and Smart, although that connection is very important. It's a connection between regional pathways, regional regional bikeways that connect all of the communities of Eastern Marin and Sonoma County, the North-South Greenway from Larkspur, the ferry terminal, downtown San Rafael, the North-South Bike Way between Nevado and San Rafael, the Bay Trail. All of these pathways and the the entire North-South, North San Rafael Promenade, which begins at the TerreLinda Community Center, connects near Vallecedo Elementary School and along the Marydale segment to the Civic Center. So it's really an incredibly important piece of a puzzle, which is the wider regional multimobility grid, sustainable mobility grid. And thank you for your efforts in promoting it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney. I'm from San Antonio, San Rafael. It's great to be back. Great to see you all face to face. What you're seeing here tonight is the power of an idea of having a promenade to serve as really the spine of an evolving walkable neighborhood in North San Rafael. Very powerful idea, and now it's coming to fruition. You're also seeing the staying power of the community, and especially of Shirley Fisher, to keep this idea afloat and keep it developing as times change. It's also an opportunity to create a truly shared multi-use path. And I'm saying that rather than bike path, it's a multi-use path, equally welcoming to pedestrians and cyclists, and also shared with natural elements like the trees and the bioswales, so that people have a pleasant and safe way to access transit without having to drive and and therefore without the greenhouse gas emissions that come with, come with driving and that, in fact, are driving climate change. So we ask your support for option D and to give that serious consideration in light of Smart's previous commitment to build parking on the east side. And it's my understanding that there are agreements in place with the extensive parking that exists in lots and on the street, right across the street on the east side. So I ask you to look at that very carefully and suggest that your direct staff to pursue option D with seriousness. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Nice to see you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Johnston. I'm with the Galinas Watershed Council, and we did participate with the other groups that you here tonight have heard from in developing recommendations that you support the no parking option. I was resident of TerreLinda when the promenade plan was originally proposed, and the idea of the promenade was really walking and biking throughout TerreLinda and to the Civic Center. It didn't have anything to do with making car access easier. It all had to do with walking and biking and making that pleasant, safe, and easy to get from the TerreLinda Rec Center to the Civic Center by pedestrian and bicycling means. And part of being pleasant involves having vegetation and and having shade. And so anything that would remove trees or narrow the pathway so that there's not as much room for vegetation, I think, is not consistent with the original purposes of the promenade. So basically, we're concerned, two things. One, to keep that pleasant, walkable, bikeable pathway, the primary focus. And second, that we promote the idea of green streets and biofiltration in all projects that involve any additional hard surface and that infiltration be maximized to reduce pollution to Galinas Creek. And that would involve having bioswales as maximumly used in this project. So for those reasons, we do definitely support the no parking option.
Thank you, Margaret. Hi, Kathy. Sorry, I forgot that you were there at that walkabout. It was two plus years ago.
Thank you, city council members and Mayor Cullen. My name is Kathy Manovi. I'm a member of the Community Advisory Committee for that has been working with the Department of Public Works for several years now with this planning process and enjoying very much their collaboration in that regard. I want to just wholeheartedly request that we think about doing things differently. It's always been about parking. This is an opportunity to take a dead-end street that connects some very, very important pathways, not just to Smart from communities, but also people wanting to go to the Civic Center and beyond, safe routes to schools and so forth. The planning of this path has been really wanting to prioritize making it a people-centered pathway that's beautiful to walk and includes more plantings, more trees. In order to do that, the options that are presented include things like bioswales and things where you could make the what now looks like kind of a bleak pathway in many regards and certain stretches of it better. I think about places like that as places that need enhancement and not things that are like, oh, well, let's just forget about trying to make it better because it's bad. It's an opportunity to do things different. As mentioned before, there is recycled water piping already along that stretch, so it's it's a great opportunity to be able to capitalize on what's already there. I think that we have to think about how long it takes for trees to grow and think about alternatives to removing any that exist in ways that we can plant even more to make it a safe, really well-separated space for people to walk and cycle and do what they need to do to enjoy the area. Also, it's a great opportunity to to connect Northgate Town Square people that will be in that development in a walkable way to their resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Patrick Seidler, WTB TAM. Again, would like to thank the Department of Public Works for its leadership and guidance with this pinnacle project, the Mary Dale segment of the Northgate Promenade. I would also like to recognize the members of the Mary Dale Promenade Citizens Advisory Group. These are literally the titans of San Rafael's and Marin's community engagement to make our city and county a better place. And please consider the things that they're saying. It's a broad group, huge constituency. And I had some other things to say, but I want to address the parking issue. And here's the thing, is we did leave something out of that packet, which I encourage you to really take a close look at, but there is nothing but parking all over the place down there. In fact, Smart's got their parking supposed to be on the east side of Highway 101. And we've got a document we'll give to you that shows you that, that there's parking from every which way that you can get there. The reason that there's the only parking that's going on down there, and we've gone down and done the parking surveys, we got up at six in the morning numerous times. And you know who parks down there? The good folks from Guide Dogs for the Blind. And they're parking down there because it's easier. They've got a place to park and plenty of parking spaces because he made sure they had a lot of parking spaces when they built their facility and redid it. And so we've actually engaged them and told them where our position is. We're hoping to hear from them about that because we want to engage them and give them a great place to get people from this train station over to their facility. I'd also like to draw your attention to Exhibits D and E. And if you look at D and E, there's, what you'll see is that the other segments, millions of dollars that have been invested in this area, match what we're requesting, which is an area for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so the real question is, is to pull it to the 10,000-foot level. What's really missing here and look back from the future? Your legacy as a council will be measured by how a project with this much potential is handled. The families and kids in the community are looking to you. Did you make this a gateway to North San Rafael, the center of a sustainable mobility grid, or a half-baked parking lot with false promise of vacant parking space that is already full, inviting more cars on a fool's errand, keeping away the families, the children, the strollers, and eliminating the gateway to Northern San Rafael? Join the chorus for the former. Do not be fooled by the false promise of the latter. This is an inordinate opportunity, and we're looking for your continued leadership to make this real. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Patrick. I was gonna say, there's only one other person who hasn't spoken yet, and here she is. Woo-hoo.
Thank you, Council and staff. I ride through this on a bike frequently, not on the promenade, but on the Smart Path, which by the way, if you haven't been on, it's become very beautiful. The mature oaks overarch, the creek flows through. It's really lovely. And what I find is on market days and on fair days, it's really full of families with people, kids with strollers, they've got their dogs. In fact, every day they have their dogs on leash. People love to walk there. I think there's a latent demand for more of a park in that area and that the Mary Dale Promenade could supply that park. It's becoming actually off-putting to ride a bike through on the bike path because it's, there's a lot of us enjoying it. So I think more park is good and more bioswale is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any virtual public comment?
We do have a hand raised here. I just want to remind anyone who's watching through Zoom and wants to comment, you can use the raise hand feature.
Hello, this is Kate Powers again. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. As a member of EPAC, I wanted to remind the council that the adopted master plan from 2018 has two goals that are on the top two, and that is, one is safety, which is to identify, prioritize, and implement bicycle, pedestrian-related safety improvements. And the second highest goal is connectivity, to develop bike and ped networks that connect residents and visitors to major activity and shopping centers, existing and planned transit, and schools, and to work to close gaps between existing facilities. I would suggest that, as Bill mentioned, this project is in the bike plan, and I would say that this bike plan meets both of those two goals, the best with the no parking alternative. The other thing that I just wanted to draw your attention to with the Terre Linda Homeowners' Association letter is the conservation and climate change policies and programs that the city has adopted to reduce pollution runoff and require best management practices to minimize disturbance of creeks and natural drainage patterns, to encourage construction and design methods that return stormwater on-site and reduce runoff to storm drains and creeks, and also to have fewer impacts on air and water quality flooding climate and natural habitat. The areas where the bioswales are in the green infrastructure are conceptual placing to my understanding, and there really needs to be a design, a full design of what that would require in terms of space to optimize that function. And I would just say that the no parking.
Thank you, Kate.
Hi, this is Grace Garrity again with Responsible Growth in Marin. And speaking personally from the heart, we did send a letter basically agreeing with all the other community groups and organizations that have spoken today. But I do want to mention that, one, this has something that the community has long awaited, and, two, we have been using this ongoing. My daughter is now 38. When she was a toddler, we, with her stroller, we would walk there to the fair, we would religiously be there, you know, Thursdays and Sundays at the farmer's market. And not just us, loads of families. And families continue to walk and bike that area, and it is a way to connect, you know, both sides of San Rafael. And there is plenty of parking on the east side by the Doughboys statues, et cetera. So please consider the no option parking. And we are thrilled that you are all focusing on this once again, and we hope you will find the funding for this really important, critical project for our community. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Grace.
Hi, I just want to thank you, Mayor Colin, Council members, and Department of Public Works for your time this evening. My name is Heidi Howerton, and I am a resident of Terre Linda and a member of the Mary Dale Promenade Citizens Advisory Group. I'm also a parent to three young children and subsequently a frequent user of sidewalks and pedestrian paths. We live on Nova Albion, near the intersection with Los Galinas Avenue, where we use a three-and-a-half-foot sidewalk immediately adjacent to parallel parking every morning and every afternoon to get to and from school. This walk is crowded, hectic, and you have to be on constant alert when you're walking with small children and you have cars pulling into and out of the sidewalk. When my oldest child was three and wanted to go to the fair, I didn't even know about the Mary Dale Road, so we used the overpass, the highway overpass, and that was terrifying and very hot. So I have noticed that there are good paths in the neighborhood, and it doesn't take much to really change the experience. Wider sidewalks, trees for shade and cooling, and having that buffer between the road and sidewalk really make a big difference. So I urge you all to consider the no parking alternative for the safety and just the enjoyment of children and fellow parents and caregivers. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Heidi.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close a public comment. Bring it back to the council for closing comments. You're just listening this evening, as I understand it, right? There's no...
That is correct. We're looking for your feedback.
You're in your listening mode. Okay, so additional feedback?
Excuse me, Mayor Kate.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I just add that the reason why we're in listening mode is because we don't currently have funds to construct the project, but we do want to get it designed so that, because there is infrastructure money out there, particularly for shovel-ready projects. So we want to get it to that stage that it is shovel-ready, and in order to proceed on that design to get to that stage, you should know which option to go with. So we are in listening mode, but we're also hoping to get feedback as to kind of what's the preferred option so we can move it along into the design phase.
Okay.
Before they transition to listening mode, may I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. The ADA parking places, all of your options include them. Why?
If we're rebuilding the street there and creating this promenade, an ADA parking space is appropriate to put there. It serves the train station, it fits in the area, and it's a valuable parking space to have adjacent to the train. So in the sense that we're rebuilding everything there, it's appropriate to put an ADA parking space in.
Okay, well, have you conferred with Smart? Don't they, they have? Well, I've seen ADA parking places over on the other side by the train station.
I don't, I may be wrong, but...
No, so, well, so are these, I guess my question is, are these required for the train station?
No, it is not a train station requirement. If they were providing parking, they would be providing ADA parking spaces as well, but they are not providing parking. They're, I, you know, proposing using parking spaces that are, you know, in other people's parking lots and signing agreements with them. But, and we were in discussions with them early on about providing parking on this side of the street as well. And if they had gone forward with that plan, they would be providing ADA parking, and it's dependent on how many parking spaces you provide, how many ADA spots are required. And all of our schemes were under the threshold where more than one would be required, but we would want to and should put one parking space in if we put all this other parking in place.
But if we put no parking there?
If there's no parking there, I don't believe that there is a requirement for an ADA spot.
So it's not required?
That's, I believe, correct.
It's not required, and we're not, there's some contractual commitment to Smart to provide them with ADA spots.
No, this is not related to Smart or in agreement with Smart at all.
So those ADA spots are in fact optional?
With no parking, the ADA spot would be optional.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Couple questions. Does the no parking option remove any trees?
They all remove a couple of trees because we're trying to get two lanes of traffic through there as well, two full lanes of traffic. Right now, it's sort of a country road, so to speak.
Right, and there really isn't too late, there's not really a traffic because it's not a thoroughfare. It's people, anyone who drives in there is really only driving in there hoping to find a parking spot.
Or to drop someone at the Smart.
Or to drop somebody off of the train. Right, okay. And then if we considered an option with parking and somehow Smart comes through and identifies another parking option, could we change that position?
The parking space would be created as part of the development of the project. If we chose to remove the parking spaces, that's certainly a possibility.
And another question is, so McGinnis, so I use this path all the time, right? Because it is, it's part of the neighborhood. It's a great way to get from one end to the other. It is nice. It's loud, it's right by the freeway. You sort of feel like you're on the freeway, but you're not. It is sort of pretty because it has the cemetery. So, I mean, there's this mixed bag of what this path is, but it's a great connector. And I fully agree and so support the work that the, all the different agencies have worked on and the community has worked on to think about this path as a connector path. That, let's see where I was going. Oh, McGinnis used to be an area where you could park. It is now all red. And I was wondering if, where that came from, if anyone, I don't know who painted it all the way red because it used, because I used to work at one McGinnis and I used to park on the McGinnis. And so I know that, and now it's all red. And I don't know where that, was that driven by, who drove that? Because that is also, used to be viable parking for the train.
I do not have the history on how McGinnis came to be what it is today.
Does anyone remember? Does anyone know? I don't even know when, all of a sudden, because now I'm all aware of like every street here that it's red, and I was like, when did it become red? So I don't know.
A lot of, a lot of the reasons we make streets red is because of sight distances, ensuring that people have adequate vision to see what's coming up at an intersection before they approach the intersection. Raffada and Lauren have both been very active in creating those kinds of sight distances where it's pointed out to us.
It feels like it's a little bit, because it's very long. It's all the way down, yeah. So I was just curious if that's also, if that was a discussion at some point.
Well, at one time, we talked about it, and I think we did actually reduce the amount of red space there because it was quite long, but we removed it and created more parking on McGinnis in my lifetime, but it's been red for a long time.
Okay.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Kurtz, the only history I would add to it is we were, as Public Works Director Garan was saying, we were working with Smart to try to do parking in this area, and they dropped that plan. And there was like a kiss-and-ride on the other side of the freeway, and they declined to move forward with that as well. So at that point, we did take a lot of the red curbing off of McGinnis because we were trying to create more parking there. So if more's been added, that's news to me. I need to look into that. But we were trying to create more parking spaces on that street just because it was a public street and it's a long street. There is a history of some of the neighborhoods, some of the neighbors further down that street that doesn't like parking in the area, particularly during the time of the fair. But this shouldn't, that shouldn't be this issue closer to the Smart Station.
No, 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 that's right, yeah. And I do agree, the work patterns have changed in those buildings that, for the last couple of weeks I've been driving past, and there's a lot of available parking. And I mean, who knows how things will change, and I recognize that those are private, and it would be a smart conversation to deal with that, but it does seem like there, maybe it's an opportunity to have, re-engage with that conversation.
Can I just correct something that I said? I don't believe a tree is being removed in the no parking schemes. Just to clarify, I just relooked at my exhibit, and it doesn't look like any trees are being removed.
And then, sorry, I keep going. I have like, sort of, of all the four, the four options, all of them provide a very comparable promenade.
Yes.
And they're all, and they all provide additional planting and greenery.
Yes.
Okay. So of those, where? I'm probably more inclined for option B, which is the additional parking on the...
Opposite side of the street.
Opposite side of the promenade, yeah. But I would push harder to have Smart provide additional parking.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, no, thank you very much. Councilmember Bushy.
I have two things on, just to, my, my recommendation is that we fully embrace the idea of making this as lush as possible and making it as pleasant as possible. There doesn't seem to be anyone interested in the parking there. No one, literally no one has shown up to advocate for this parking. We have no advocates for it. I'm not sure what constituency we think we would be acting for in ensuring this parking. And I'm very concerned about the practical implications of it. A dead-end street, the U-turns, and all that, and what it would, what it would create. So I think my inclination is a sort of option, option D sub 1, without the ADA parking. I'm not sure why we would volunteer space for a missing advocate what we think someone might want. So I would be in that position. And I would even go further on the lush side, thinking about the recycled water that's available. You know, let's go all in and really maybe make it some sort of demonstration project of what recycled water can do to encourage more use of recycled water because that's, needs to be part of our feature. And if we could make this something really, really lovely from a country road to a lush country road, using, you know, recycled water, that would be, I think, a big plus.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, no, I...
Yeah, no, I agree with Councilmember Bushy. And I'm a little bit jealous because here we are in the parking committees in the canal, trying to find more parking. And I live in Bret Hart where we don't even have sidewalks. So, you know, I'm like, wow, this is amazing. So honestly, I feel like nobody's advocating for parking, and it doesn't seem that actually is necessary. So as much, I guess a question that I have is if the design will be made with no parking, and then in fifty years, suddenly, we really need parking there. I don't know why. Is that something that we could do later based on the design? But it, it does, it seems to me that it's more like a trying to, I'm answering my own question, sorry. That is, you know, that we're trying to make like a, a mixed path and a connector. So I, I will actually advocate for no parking as well. I will add more trees, even if you don't have to remove them. I will actually probably put some more and, and just make it nice. And hopefully, we can do this in more areas of San Rafael. I don't know how, but it would be amazing. So, so, yeah. Yeah, it's refreshing not to have to worry about parking. And I do believe that the future is going to be less cars, a different way of doing things. So I, so I support actually what Council, Councilmember Bush is saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we promised it'd be an interesting evening. It wasn't just the cupcakes. So thank you for bringing this for us. I will just be blunt, I can't imagine not having parking there. If we're committed to SMART, which was voted on by the voters throughout the North Bay, I want to remove any barriers to people participating and getting on the train, and part of that is not being able to park there. And to me, I am so grateful for the citizens that have been active and have been a part of the conversation so far. This isn't a country road. We have a freeway on one side. We have a cemetery on the other, which is very lush. But we also have a huge development coming in at Northgate. And so for me to assume that the folks that are in, going to be here, so these are the folks that live here now, have a desire now, but I'm thinking in the future that they'll want to drive, maybe they'll need ADA and not have to go all the way over to the freeway. So we have people coming. San Rafael's changing. So I agree. I mean, right now, today, there doesn't seem to be a lot of demand, but I'm thinking we want SMART to be successful. I'm assuming it's going to be successful. And I know it doesn't seem like a barrier for all the super active people in here to go to the other side to park or to drive that extra, but that is a barrier for utilization. And I a hundred percent agree, by the way, that'd be great if, when the taxpayers voted the dollars, that parking was in there. But, you know, we're not even getting Patrick started on the multi-use path that's associated with SMART. So we, we know, we know that there have been limitations to what the dollars have been done. I actually, you know, unfortunately, Councilmember Hill isn't here because I actually don't know how we could defend not having parking there if we are truly, as a community, supporting SMART. I do believe that all of the options, A through D, I really appreciate Kate Powers reading the BPAC, connectivity and improving safety. All the options do that. So I just want to be clear, like, every single option does what we want, and that's thanks to staff. Thank you for not bringing us an option that doesn't do any of that, those things. So, yeah, so that's, that's kind of, so I'm not sure what you're gonna do with that. I think the bioswale, the bioswale was really important, but see, so I guess it, it's continuing to figure out what, how can we continue to get the night, the things that we would like to have with the bioswale, that I love the recycled water part of it. I think that's really interesting. The tree thing, I know, I know our community loves trees. I love trees too. And I'm trying to get at these long-term uses of this area. I did have one question. We don't, this isn't funded right now. There are infrastructure dollars out there. Would we have better access to some of those dollars because we're enhancing access to transit such as SMART? Just saying. So, a- again, trying to think of any way of pulling down those dollars.
Yeah, we think several things. Bike paths, attract grant money. There is a lot of infra, infrastructure money that's going to be spent. This project, we're, we're trying to get it shovel-ready, as Jim pointed out, that, that we will be in a position where we can apply for grant funding. I'll make some other comments since you, you gave me the opportunity. There, there are trees in the, the planted area adjacent to the bike path where, where there is green space. We would intend to plant trees there as well. And the bioswales are extensive here. We're, we're accommodating the water that's coming down the hill from, and it is a hill that goes down towards the creek, obviously. And so there, the bioswales are intended to capture the water there. So I think there is opportunities for green space and lush green space. I, I certainly didn't think the full parking scheme was going to be the winner coming out of the city.
That was actually...
That's true, true.
Well, to be honest, I mean, that was the one, I really feel, I've been listening to my colleagues, so I would support right now the option B, because I was supporting C. You know, again, I, I want people on the train. I want it to be successful because if it's not successful, then that's not a good thing for our community. So I'm interested in that, and to me, it's a both and. We still have the bike lane. It's still going to be lush. We're going to plant those Mary Beth's trees and have her recycling. And it really recognizes that the folks that are here today are also thinking about folks that are coming in, in the future. So, and, oh, and I did want to actually, because you had mentioned something really interesting, saying there weren't any advocates saying that we want parking. So I do think when you have a neighborhood group, right, so the people that, you guys all walk there, right? That's something that's really part of your backyard, as it were. The people that are going to be parking there is probably not their backyard. So maybe it's the people that are a little bit farther out saying, hey, I'm going to ride the train because I actually live up near Scotty's Market, and I'm really excited because I'm going to start taking SMART up to wherever. So I, I do think I just want to be careful with, with, with the advocacy as to who is providing it and, and the really thoughtful input. But if you take the concentric circle out, other folks who weren't neighborhood folks, so then who are you building it for? Just the folks that are there or for people that might be drawn in there? So trying to look at the bigger, the bigger community swath. City Manager Schutz, how would you like us to proceed?
Well, I'm...
Before we get to cupcakes?
I'm standing between cupcakes. I, I think that the, I think one of the things that's going on is that we're focusing so much on the parking. And actually, the project is this great promenade that's in all the schemes.
Correct.
And in all the schemes, we have new greenspace and new bioswales. So I, I think that there's a way, and I'll ask Bill this question. I, I think if you, if you take B, where the parking is away from the bike path, I think you can design it in such a way so that you could either start with or without the parking, like you can create enough room over there to do parking. And, and really, as I said, the design is not to put in parking places here. The design is this whole project. So we can get the design underway. We can, we can make progress on that. And we can leave room for, if, if you don't want to decide tonight if we want to have a fifth member or something, we can leave room for the decision to be made later on whether that parking gets put in or not because there's actually room for it. And, and it could be that you start one way or the other. You start, you know, with the parking and then see it's not used and take it out. Or you start without it and think it's used and add it. But my question for Bill is, it looks like everything kind of along the path, you could still design, you'd cut into a little bit further on the, on the other side. But, so it might be a little bit more expensive to kind of keep the options open, but it seems doable.
And I, and I agree with that. I was, I was thinking the same thing, that we've at least narrowed it down to two options now, and I think that's, that's huge progress. The, the bike path itself is generally the same in, in either of the options. You know, it's kind of tucked up against the freeway, and then it comes down towards the SMART station. So, so that part of the design is where all the, the time and effort's going to be spent anyway. Creating the curb on the other side of the street is not, you know, a hugely expensive or, or design-intensive endeavor. So we can, we can definitely advance the design with the, with the comments that we've received tonight. And then, and, and as, as we get to a place where there's a real project to, to consider, we'll come back with the project itself, and maybe we'll bring those two options back to the council at that time.
Yeah. And, and I think when it comes back is expanding the stakeholders in the conversation to maybe folks that live further beyond as well as to the SMART folks, just see, see what they have to say. That would be important. Okay, so with that, is there recommended action?
Accept.
Someone want to make a motion? Yep. Go ahead, Micah.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaden Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries for zero. And I have to say, before we adjourn the meeting, a huge thank you to our tech team and to our city clerk, Madam City Clerk. There is a lot of work to make this thing seamless. So we're doing an applause. People on, we can hear each other applause, right? We're not waving each other like this, but, but, so thank you. We, this hybrid, I think, is really important to continue to expand public comment, both in person and the virtual, and you guys have made it happen. So thank you, thank you so much. With that, the meeting's adjourned. Go get a cupcake.
Yay!